Okay, so I'm gonna call this Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting for December 5th. We're called to order this December 5th Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of a lieutenant meetings from public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In complying to the Open Public Meetings Act, Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website, and has used 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will begin the opportunity to do so before or during the meeting. Okay, roll call. Ms. Chris Alton?
Here.
Ms. Marasti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gallon? Mr. Greger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Ms. Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Prust?
Here.
Mr. Rizlevich? Mr. Woodburn?
Here.
Okay, we are not going to exact the sessions, so we're gonna move on and go to the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We had no communications this month, so we are gonna go to the best student representative board.
For urban school, the PTO will have their annual holiday market on December 14th and 15th. Family shopping night will be on the 15th of this month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the media center. And coffee with the principal will be December 13th at 8:30 a.m. The winter sing-along will be December 23rd. Information will follow. For bar to school, coffee with the principal will be December 13th as well, but this will be at 6:00 p.m. And the monthly homeschool meeting will be December 16th. The winter concert for Dora will be at 7:00 p.m. December 22nd. And for the middle school, Student Congress. At the middle school is running another spirit week, Spirit War Sale. Orders can be placed online until December 16th. Proceeds will help fund field trips and other fun events at the middle school. Thank you for our support. Also, they are running a World Cup intensive program. Students can earn tickets by doing respectful, responsible, safe behavior. If students earn 10 tickets, they are now opportunity to watch a World Cup game during the day. The winter concert for choir band and orchestra will be on December 15th at 7:00 in the high squad tour. There will be a presentation of Sabbath and eighth prayers on Wednesday, this Wednesday about the end of May. And for the high school, there was a Red Cross board drive last Friday. The class 2025 holiday pop-up truck was on Sunday. Also, the Alice in Wonderland play was last Saturday and Sunday. And for our year one, the high honor row number was 88 students, and the honor row was 135 students. Also, the winter concert for choir orchestra band will be at 7:00 p.m. on December 13th. And the winter assembly will be on December 23rd of this month. So the African-American, also African-American Culture Club, DECA, and the Red Cross Club will be doing holiday grants during this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot going on. The two weeks are busy this whole season. Okay, we move to superintendent report, and we have a wonderful presentation today.
Sure, thank you. First, I actually wanted to acknowledge, I know Reyes is not here today, but she did a wonderful job in the play. So for those who went to go see the drama this weekend, it was very well produced, and the students did a phenomenal job, so I commend them all for that. So tonight, I'm really excited to welcome Ms. Elizabeth Asamoah, our supervisor of counseling health and wellness, to join me. She's gonna make a presentation on the TEAN Center, exchange from our TEAN Center, and kind of give you all an update about the mental health supports for students now around the entire district. So come on up, Ms. Asamoah, and I'll plug in and get set up for everybody at home to give us a minute.
Okay, so. I would be grateful.
Yeah, we're pretty flexible this Asamoah. We gotta, we'll figure. It's hard to navigate our hybrid approach here, so make yourself comfy. Think I'm good. Um, okay, good. Dorothy always gives me the thumbs up. I'm good. All right. We're ready for you.
All right, thank you. I want to.
Just make sure you keep the microphone off. Sorry, just grab a mic closer to you and, yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank all of the students who came to be here to talk about the program that I love so much, the TEAN Center, so I really appreciate this. My staff would have loved to come, but you know, they have other responsibilities, and we are unable to. So I speak for all of them. So the first part is welcome to the TEAN Center. This is, just put this out there, just so that could maybe the students and the school staff will all know what we represent for the TEAN Center is about, and so that they can feel free to come in. So who are we? Just hopefully it's a new services program, providing comprehensive programs to all the high school students in Highland Park. That's our plan of things.
I'm sorry. I'm just gonna slow you down for a half second. I don't. Dorothy and Alice, are you able to see it just fine? Nope, it's a puff down. Hold on a second. All right, hold on.
Okay, you're welcome.
Oh. All right, I guess I'm just gonna keep it this way, because I think if I present it, it might get popped. I'm gonna click through your slides, so just kind of like give me a pointer if you want me to click through a slide.
Okay, I'll do that. All right, all right. So we are managed by the Highland Park Board of Education, and we are funded by the New Jersey Department of Children and Victims. The TEAN Center is one of the 90 school programs in the state. So they are operating in system high schools, 80 middle schools, and type elementary schools in New Jersey. TCMFAT. The TCMFAT reports that our program has been in this district for 35 years. However, the paper that I have shows that from 1999, it's already developed, but also. So this is a collaboration, when this started about 35 years ago, it was a collaboration between the Highland Park Board of Education, the Mayor's Office, and Buckminster University for the Memorandum of Understanding. And in 2000, the program was established for those who are high school students. So TEAN staff, our district employees, because sometimes I do get a question of, I TEAN staff, district employees, yes, we are. Although funding comes primarily from the state, each community can determine the most effective operating model for their program. So the minimum requirement is to include an agreement between the community agencies and local districts to support the local teachers union and establishment of the local advisory committee. So what is our mission? Our mission, through collaboration with the internal and external stakeholders, is to provide trauma-informed, age- and emotionally appropriate programming that supports the personal, academic, and emotional success of all our students. So our objectives are going to provide educational, protective, supportive, preparational services for the participants to develop their coping, negotiating, and decision-making skills. That's a lot of words, really. So all that's on our goals. Our goals are to promote healthy development, provide teens with a safe and supportive environment, to facilitate a smooth and successful conversation from adults and adolescents, to decrease the incidence of higher-risk behaviors and being subject to life-saving systems, and to provide participants with skills to enhance their intra- and interpersonal relationships. But above all, to also encourage positive parent-child relationships. So this is the program staff. We're gonna go through their by name. We have Ms. Asamoah, help me. Supervisor, clinical psychologist, Dr. Roth. Our progress support case manager is Holden. Secretary is Karen Epps. The counselors that we have this year, each year we get counselors, and I'll talk more about the counselors as we go along. But this year, we have, and this is here, we have Angela Cooper, who's from Buckminster University. She's a doctor of psychology students. Joshua Dow, who's a social work student from Buckminster. Samantha Weber, a master of school counseling students, who's from Buckminster. Wraya Handel, who's also a master of social work student from Buckminster. Dana Lombardi, a master of social counseling, who's from Buckminster. Emily Perrot, who's a doctor of psychology, sent to Elizabeth University. This is the first year we pass up a counseling at Elizabeth University. Ryan Sisow, who's also from Buckminster, a master of school counseling. Yvette New, doctor of psychology from the Shippa University. And Alina Yu, also from, doctor of psychology from Buckminster University. And we are also, the school staff is also housed in the TEAN Center, so Karen May is also a member of the TEAN Center. Our overall cooperation, we are open for Monday to Friday, Saturday to 4:00 p.m. Before and after-school hours are by appointment only. Some are programmed and housed by appointment only, and we follow the district's calendars, so that's good. So we do the student-centered approach to what we do. It's been, possibly, twelve with the notion that the counselor is going to face the problem the student is having. That approach helps the students to understand, for us to understand what the student is experiencing, and how to help him or her, hopefully, give them a great path of resolution within. So by doing that, we are also supporting the student to come up with their own solutions so that they can make decisions for themselves in the future. And so it's the school, the district, and the heart of all we do. School, the home, the community, and the TEAN Center is right there, too. So we are looking for the TEAN Center. Very excited about the TEAN Center. The TEAN Center, for years, we've always wanted, because we know that working with kids from elementary school gives them the ability to develop all these cognitive skills, self-attacking in the high school. You know, they are doing incredibly well. And so last year, that's a big project. Thank you so much for this, you know, coming up with this idea to expand our services into the elementary schools, and also to help fund the entries and start and, you know, supervising them as well. So it started in September 2022. We are currently upgrading at Irving and Borllo and the New Schools, this is just a pandemic. We provide entries one, two, and three interventions at the schools. Our parents are concerned from, is needed to participate in entries one and two services. And we collaborate with the school administrators. Len and Jen have been amazing, providing spaces. The school counselors, Tara and Lila, have also been very supportive. All the teachers, everyone has been very supportive. So the TEAN Center, it's a staff schedule. We have three counselors who are going on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And also, Scott, the TEAN psychologist, is also there on Friday. He has a case load there. At Borllo, we have four counselors who are there on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we also have Kim Holman, who goes there on Fridays as a case load there, and Scott also has a case load there. I'm also trying, vying to have a case load there, so maybe one of these is unfortunate, having a case load there, too. So the entries we rotate in, with every cycle, so next week, after the break, we rotate it, but we always have three or four entries at this point to the right school. So the TEAN Center, it's a level of service report. This is recorded from October 1st to November 30th. Currently, we are seeing 12 students at Borllo and Irving, for a total of 51 sessions. And that does not include the case management, following form, giving to their parents, and all this. These are just sessions we have with the students. We are also running two social skills group weekly at Irving. And then we're also doing classroom presentations to talk about social and emotional topics that we need. At Borllo, we also have, we are seeing 23 students currently. This is from October 1st to November 30th. They're doing a lot. And we've had 70 sessions so far. We run three social skills group at Borllo, and we're also doing classroom presentations, classroom exercises. So our one staff of service levels of, our service delivery model is a one-staff shop, especially at the secondary level. Because it includes mental health counseling, employment counseling, and all the other services that we offer. So for our tier one interventions, this is the classroom, this is how we do. Most of it, because it's very tiny, but available to. So for September, we did a resubmission for elementary, and then suicide prevention for the secondary. In October, we did a couple of resubmissions for elementary, and then couple of resubmissions for secondary. November, emotion regulation for all schools. December, we're doing relationships for the elementary schools, and sexual harassment for secondary level. January, mental health hygiene for all schools. February, we're doing effective coping skills for elementary, and managing stress and anxiety for secondary. March, psychological safety skills for all schools. In April, we have boundary setting for elementary, and sexual violence prevention for secondary. And in May, we're doing self-care strategies, because soon the school will end everything, you know, so they have to have all these provisions for that, but the school is having a session, they know how to deal with this. Our teacher collaboration is crucial, especially in these classroom presentations. So at the elementary level, the school counselors helped by special in these classroom presentations. At the middle school level, we go to the flex classrooms to do this. And at the high school, we announce the teacher sign-up for it, and it will all be amazing, helping us reach the students in the classrooms. So the groups that we also have, our tier two interventions, are the group meet once a week for 30 minutes at the elementary level, and at the high school, secondary level, for 45 minutes. So some of the groups that we have, I'll just go through them all, because there's a lot of groups. Social skills for Irving and Borllo. At the middle school, we have executive functioning skills. At the high school, we have peer-to-peer mentoring program. Also have emotional regulation, and current lane, we establish class action, which is a substance abuse prevention program for the level of where it's at the high school. Also, when we come back from the break, we have self-awareness for Irving, self-management for Borllo, interpersonal skills, and peace to inner visions, and white rhetoric for the middle school. Also, we have a life fights curriculum, which is a suicide prevention curriculum for elementary school as well. At the high school, we have our life fights curriculum. Emotion regulation, safe days, healthy relationships, once again, class action, and then have a membership, having a membership being facilitated by a goal screen program. So then tier three is the intervention between mental health services. So how do we do this? First, we have to get a referral, and then there's an interview from the student, and then there's an assessment, and do a treatment by the student. And we set goals for them, so that we know when to reach their goals, we have a good time to terminate. And then we do the, we apply the intervention, and then we evaluate, and then we determine if we'll transfer them. It may be, sometimes there's a need to seek outside help, because they need more some intensive therapy, right here. That was when I qualified them, because it's a school, so we're not into so much. So we have to send them out to the search for the need. Provide assist intervention, says we have an upset or whatever, we try to. But with them, we do risk assessment as well, because we try to threat assessments. And also, this provisional feature, which is mostly done by staff, the clinical piece, going to the general group. Provide professional development, and also after-hours practice response, which last year, we had a phone with people call after hours, but this year, we're looking to the staff, staff people helping back to do this. Jobs we use. So we try to also provide employment services for them. We have a career fair every year. We also have job opening announcements, so it is just, I think, that counts to our attention. The announcement to the students, and also provide employment counseling, once they start working, you know, how to dress up, how to present at some work, and all these things, so they can talk to us and assist them. Learning support is a big part of what we do, too. So we have a freshman and summer transition program, which we collaborate with the high school. Welcome, highly, that's a collaboration also with the middle school. And throughout the school year, we collaborate with the values staff, teachers, child study team, administration, and, you know, parents, everyone else. Substance abuse prevention, this is Karen May, what she's, what she's doing for us. The second collaboration with the physical alliance. Every year, they give us some funding for some of these programs, community programs. So in the group, the past presentations, we have our class action for high school, and then our binding for middle school. We also have a school-wide assembly, and also referrals as the. So that's part of that, too. And referral and access to health and social services. There are some people in our community, or some, you know, the working people, there's people that's really needs really support. And it's important for us to recognize that, you know, yes, we provide the mental health piece, but sometimes all the student who needs is maybe some funding to buy food, or some clothing, or whatever. Or people are feeling out of home. We don't want to ignore that, so we try to do that for them as well. So we provide financial assistance, very, very limited, though, in a minimal amount, but it's, it can go a long way. We also bring referrals to community agents, social services. We assist with insurance application. It's so hard to propose an application. Kim Holman is so good at it, so we send the kids to her to help out. And also with social services applications. So thanks for coming, seeing her, and she loves them with them. Also, for Thanksgiving, we give gifts cards for families to buy food, and to recognize them for their families. And so for holidays, we also give the gift cards as well. And also, in some places, we refer families to immigration or legal services, free services, so that we can get them the necessary support that they need. After-school programs, we have a really vibrant after-school program that the pandemic kicked. So the time was just slow, but the time with the middle school. So we have a middle school after-school equation, which started last week, and 74,000 more students sign up and join in and have fun. So cultural and educational culture, once again, used to have great culture in the pandemic. So we're prepared, and we went to the American Museum of National History, Ahado Theater, African burial grounds, Shangri-La Museum, Hammond and Varian, Framing Institute, Holocaust Museum, Interpreted Museum, National Museum of African and American History, I Hated Nations, colored tours, and, you know, other places. But this year, we've done one trip so far, so concentrated in the museum experience. Like, it's really like they went to a farm, a bit more, South Jersey, really nice. And we're also planning to have a Broadway tour trip in May, in June, so I'm really excited about that. We look forward to that. And school-wide events. So this year, a painter spoke about earlier, we're going to have cannabis, a new representation for the middle school and the high school. Also, family by, for the bands. Cultural and community engagement. In October, we had a Hispanic Heritage Month. The students really loved it, you know, the cafeteria, the bridge, I gave them churros, I mean, really, yes. They had about three, but it was great. January, we have our Lunar New Year coming up. In February, we have our Black History Month. You know, we also, we have our Valentine's Day dance. If you get a chance, you should come and see the Valentine's Day dance. I mean, the kids, the guys are really excited, and it's really nice. And in March, we have Women's History Month. Men, we have put it in place sites, that's for parents. And also, in May, once again, we have a parents' pool host, to talk about the laws against, you know, posting a certain amount of minors in your home, where you're required. So our level of service. So the state requires, or the funders require, that we provide 280 antiquated services, so that we group all individual services for students. Now, the challenge that we face is that, you know, whereas other programs such as New Brunswick, that also has their program, there are about at least 2,000 students in their high school alone. And for ours, combining those with high school, we have 100,000 students. But the state requires that we also save a lot of students. So like, obviously, in New Brunswick, I mean, summertime alone, we're done. But for us, so we have to get a little more creative, and go out and do more tier two interventions. However, our actual level of service for last year was 427 students. So yes, so we are doing really well as a program. From looking at the number of students in last year, which was 253 combined, we have been 2 or 3 in the school. And we, so when you look at that, you serve about 50% of our population, which is really great for a small program like ours. For events, also, they require that we service several hundred people who are dislocated. But we took care of that number, we did over 5,000, because we didn't have events, so that's it. So just something briefly about this, the brief social and emotional support. We noticed a trend, that when schools started, some kids would come to the TEAN Center because they were feeling anxious in their class, you know, or because they had a headache, or, you know, everything, all these other reasons. If you have a headache, you're not feeling well, we'll send the kids to the nurse. But sometimes, they'll come back, they'll just sit for a minute. So we decided that if a student wants to sit for a minute, as long as they have that teacher's permission, they can sit for 10 minutes. Just 10 minutes, we'll check on them, and then we'll send them back to class. And by doing that, we realized, so this is the number, this is the data, we started collecting it in October, for really data, for, just to show that for what we did in October, from October 13th to April, we had about 63. October 10th to 14th, we had about 179, 79 visits, yes. Sometimes the same kids who was, they were signing, they were signing, but they wouldn't come back. October 17th to the 21st, we had 439 students. The 24th to the 28th, 133. October 30th to the 4th, we had 184. And then, October 7th to the 9th, because of the break in between that, we had about 40. And then, the 14th to the 8th, we had about 231. That's a weekly update. So it just shows the need that we have to continue to do the work that we do. Because some, I mean, we are able to get them back to go to class. But I'm wondering, if the TEAN Center was not here, if we didn't have this much of support, then how, the guidance counselors would be overwhelmed, the CSD would be overwhelmed, and we would need to support them, such as the need. So what are the implications? That the TEAN Center provides a safe space for all students, regardless of like, any situations or concerns. We do see and support everyone, for students who are having clear relationship difficulties. This is from Scott. To students with more psychophagology, such as OCD, major depression, and PTSD. The TEAN Center also supports students in camps that are impacted by police security, housing issues, and economic hardship. And students involved in the criminal justice system, we see them as well. The integration of the TEAN Center into the junior school operation reduces the stigma attached to receiving or accessing mental health services. So the kids don't come, because I can join, I can, they're just going to sit there, and they know as we go in their classrooms, we do school, there's everything with them, so they know us, so they feel comfortable when we say Miss Holman, Miss Asamoah, or Dr. Roth, or Miss Lane, any of us, they do come and see us. Also, the TEAN Center provides timely access to students in crisis. I think we all know, that when students are in crisis, the timing is, the response is crucial. And they are there to, we can just, sometimes they bring their friends, or they themselves will just come in, or parents will come. So that's proud. So years ago, we did a survey, which I have to relate to this year. And then we had to start to describe the TEAN Center. It said it's safe, it's great, it's happy, and I have to pause here. I would say bad, if they said, but they didn't ask us to do it. It's interesting, amazing, it's okay, it's okay, it's comfortable, it's fine, it's helpful, and it's calm. And so we didn't ask them, what do you like the least about the TEAN Center? Nothing. Someone said, they become concerned too quickly. Someone who wants to see their counselor more than once a week. And then someone said, why do you have to call my parents? Do this between us. So in their own words, the TEAN Center made my high school experience great. By the way, I'm impressed with the TEAN Center, and it's very helpful, we have a problem outside of school or in school. My impression is that it's a place that is open for children, who need a place to talk, and that it is trying to help children who have problems, moving in stress, body image. And someone said, I love the TEAN Center. And then another person said, the TEAN Center is effective and helps many people. The wellness of the staff and health, so I really like that. So we need to get collaborative approach. For, it takes the courage to raise a child, so we're going to parents, the school staff, the community programs, the students themselves, our partners, our community members, and with our board of education, and everyone else who's hoping to support the program, to see us succeed in helping children. So in here, thank you so much for your time, and really appreciate this time, too. Thank you.
So thank you so much, Ms. Asamoah. It is clear that the staff in general work really hard. The leadership team works exceptionally hard, and I'm incredibly proud and honored to serve and lead Ms. Asamoah and her team. We've been working really collaboratively, so you can see the hard work. And not only it's this, but Ms. Asamoah has done a tremendous job of overseeing the school counselors now in her new role, and the health and PE teachers, but is able to really take all of what she said here in this presentation and expanding this to quite, and those groups, too, working with our counselors in that regard, and helping them with their clinical experiences, and, you know, and their groups and everything like that, providing more of that to our students through our tweets that are especially, and then also with our health and PE teachers, especially with the new standards that are coming out, and providing more SEL support and things like that. So I'm incredibly proud and honored. Elizabeth, thank you so much. And I hope that everyone feels the, just how lucky we are to have the program, to have you, and to have your staff. I know the students that I've talked to have been incredibly grateful for it. We've saved a lot of lives, and we'll continue to do so. And so, thank you so much, and for those that are listening, if you don't provide, already provide your students, your children, consent to see our TEAN or TEAN Center staff, I really strongly encourage you to do so. I know that there is still a stigma surrounding mental health and support, but I'm a big advocate for it. I seek my own mental health support, and I think it's okay to be open about that, to talk through challenges that you have, and I'm open to sharing that personally so that other people, you know, can think through the decisions that they make. And the more students that we can tackle, the better, even at the early level, if we can overcome that stigma, and they can get comfortable with seeing people like Dr. Roth, Mrs. Holman, and you. Mrs. Pullman, and you, off there by the time they get to middle and high school, they're much more comfortable when, when, when problems escalate. Even more so when you hit middle, middle school and puberty and things like that. So it would be great that they have those relationships already formed. Um, so thank you so much, um, and I'll open, uh, open up to the board members for questions or comments.
I'm curious about your numbers, um, at the high, middle school, high school. It's like about how many students are you seeing, and whether students who need help, there's help available, will they wait in, like, you know, let's, how does that work in the school, high school?
Yes, so at the middle school or, or high school, um, students, sometimes we offer staff or students who start quite professionally, have they, have you found them? Yes, so the, uh, students, uh, will sometimes be self-repair, or they have friends who will call us and say, I want to refer this person, I don't tell them that I am today. You know, so, uh, so that's how we get at the girls. Uh, and so it, it depends, you know, usually in September, you don't, you don't have, you don't get that many referrals because they're in the school, I mean, they're great, you know, they're great, excited. And then between October and November, the numbers start going up. And certainly, uh, in January and February, it gets so busy. Uh, so this year, I think one of the things I decided to do is to have a, a short-term, uh, you know, model where we see them for eight to 12 weeks. Uh, they're starting it out, um, you know, because, you know, sometimes we see kids, but middle school, that's what they're actually, you know, I don't want to let them go, uh, or they don't want to let them go. Uh, not sure who is not letting them go. You know, uh, but we're trying to talk this month. And so we will know by January, because that's when we talk this one ahead, uh, for most of our students, if we can, uh, we can terminate or, you know, further terminate the program or things like that. But we do get a lot of referrals, I think, um, so last month, uh, in October, we serviced about 70 students. Yes, this last month, you know, we're in the state. So we do get a lot of students like this. Instead of we feel like, uh, it's a long wait, and we don't want them to keep waiting, so we provide a group for them, that address some of the concerns that they have. So the groups are also important.
And I think, just to piggyback on that, I think the last time we looked at the numbers, it's about 20% of our student population is for individual counseling, is what, is what we service, uh, which is, which is great. But again, you know, we strongly encourage, but other, the other students come for the group sessions, that's just the 20% for individual counseling.
So, so I, I thought I knew most of what you did, but I actually didn't know all that much. That was a great presentation. But I, I also would just say thank you for everything you do, everything your staff does. It's really extraordinary. Thank you.
I just also maybe want to mention, people may not realize how well the center uh, dealt with the medical care that some of the students might be carrying. Uh, you know, if they have, uh, say, eating disorder or substance abuse, uh, you know, it takes them almost a lot of time, you know, for the medical part of that treatment to go on. And, you know, it would be very difficult to have those services, you know, outside of the school. It's just won- wonderful that we're, our students are able to, to, to have those needs filled in the double.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Uh, uh, so yes, of course, sometimes it's very difficult for them to get referrals out there, uh, but we, we have built a network, so, um, so we're able to call, you know, certain people that we know and that we're, to help them or assist them. We also work closely with the nursing offices of the high school and middle school. So, you know, if it comes with a headache all the time, I mean, there's definitely something wrong with that, so. Try to, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And of course, Ms. Asamoah, if you didn't go home, unless you want to stay for the rest of our board meeting, feel free to go and get some rest. Come home, babe, and now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to want to give a report. Um, shall, do you have a quick introduction?
So I was not able to be at the meeting, unfortunately, but Allison did put together a report. I don't know if it-
Um, yes, we delivered that report at the last meeting, or we haven't met previously. Uh, I'm sorry, since that last meeting, so the, um, only things to discuss are the items in the agenda, which are, uh, number one is to, the resolution to approve field trip requests that are attached to the agenda. Um, and then, number two and three, are they-
Tabled.
They're tabled, okay, so it's just number one for the, um, field trip requests.
Thanks, Allison. Um, Wendy, could I give her the excellent, but also you presented last time, right? And so, uh, we have not asked you that. Um, so finance facilities.
Yeah, we have a relatively short, uh, report. Uh, the first item is the resolution, uh, which we'll vote on this time, most of these, to approve the attached bill list, uh, mid-October to mid-November for around $8,000. A resolution to, number two, to approve the preliminary report of the treasurer's school monies as of September 30th. Number three is a resolution to approve the report of the secretary of the board on end certification that no budgetary line item has been overextended. Number four, um, is the, uh, sufficient funds to meet the financial obligations for the rest of the year. Number five are several new, um, several new, um, profession, contractors for professional ser- uh, services. Um, uh, Mallory's Army, uh, I think they're coming, this is a coming back, uh, for an event on January 10th, to be paid, uh, by, uh, $1,200 attester funds. Um, the second group is speech therapy consultants, uh, just for us to use between December and, uh, June. It's the contracted amount, but no specific services. Um, number, uh, the third one is advanced opportunities to do assistive technology evaluations. And again, these are dollar amounts for the rest of the year, per hour, or per eval. And, uh, the last one is the athletic training services provided by Tactical Athletic Training Institute in El Segre for the rest of the year at $55 per hour. Uh, number six are two new out-of-district placements. One to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission Career Center Pathways Program, and another to East Mountain School in Bellmead, New Jersey. Um, number seven is a memorandum of understanding between Holland Park Schools and the owner of the former center school, to use the gymnasium for, uh, conducting basketball practices during the year, which we've done for a number of years. Um, number eight is a resolution to approve contract for a request or proposal for custodial management services for multi-year contract with a start date to be determined. And numbers eight and nine, we will want to vote on this evening because this is a, um, a replacement that we need to make, uh, immediately, or is being made. Um, and this is a rooftop HVAC system which failed, we're replacing it. Um, we, the, uh, that's number nine, uh, with two bids. And number 10 is the approval of purchase for this replacement unit uh, from General Plumbing Services just down the road in, um, Scottaway for approximately $11,000. It is unbudgeted, uh, but it is a serious need that we have to do since the current air conditioning component is down. Um, and that's it, so we'll come back, uh, after the personnel and policy, and then after, uh, public comment to, uh, vote on those two issues. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mark, I have a question. The Mallory's Army, is that going to be for, like, the film Q and A session that she does? Sorry, I remember she, um, had mentioned, like, showing the film, um, in January, February, as a good refresher?
Yeah, so we're gonna show the film and then, um, and then Ms. Rosen is gonna be back for the showing of the film or a Q and A.
Okay, great. Anything, anything we can do to get more parents there, please? I mean, it was such a powerful presentation, um, and I think that, that if you can make it, please go. It was incredible.
Yeah, I'm gonna start advertising afterward, you'll see it a lot in my newsletter, my communications, and on the website and on our social media, we'll, we'll push hard for it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have to say, I didn't make it to the parent presentation, but both of my high school girls came home and were just moved beyond recognition by the presentation that was done in school. I've never heard them come home from a school presentation so, like, engaged and, it, it was remarkable. I don't know what kind of magic Ms. Rosen is doing, but kudos to her.
And thank Ms. Faldeson for finding them and, and doing all the labor to, to, to bring them here to us.
I hope I can make it to the January one.
Other questions? Now we move on to personnel. Thanks.
Okay, so before I forget, uh, item number five, uh, will be, uh, uh, move with an amendment striking Alexander Brummel, so Russian translator. Uh, so we, you know, we, we met, uh, last week, we had a, a, a brief meeting. There weren't many items on the agenda. Uh, we just, I discussed the superintendent's, um, recruiting activities for, uh, foreign language teachers. Uh, we also discussed the, the governor's plans to look into the different, different things the state might do for, about the, um, staff shortages. We even listened to a different, uh, piece on N B R as I drove home tonight. Um, so the item, agenda items, uh, number one is a medical leave. Uh, two is a, a, a leave for the absence. Three is the transfer of, uh, is, is, uh, is it Duchesne, how do you pronounce the name?
Douches.
Douches. Um, four, uh, last time we had something about the, the basketball, but in fact, uh, Mr. Bay will be the, the boys' basketball coach for the middle school. Uh, five is the approval of translators. Uh, six is the, the ESL enrichment. Uh, seven is the William program. Uh, eight is the, uh, additional counseling. And, uh, number nine is the, uh, substitute secretary, uh, Ms. Spencer at Irving Primary. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, I'll turn to his question. Everyone, go ahead.
Hi. I'm like, yay, and then a oh reaction when I saw that Horton Gilliam thing, when I saw that it was after school. Blah, blah, blah. You know, obviously, like, we're talking about with the teen center, right? We can get the kids when they're here so much easier, and when things are after school, so much harder. So is there any ability to get some of that stuff, stuff moved into during the school hours? Or what is happening during the school hours? Because, you know, that's such a vulnerable population, and the more services we can get them, the better.
Yeah, so, good question, Dorsey. We actually, um, because of some of the money that we receive from the attester funds, we've gotten a significant number, and I'll have to follow up on the actual number, but a significant number of our model and Irving teachers, um, O G trained at different levels. And so what they do is this just happens to be an additional titled one piece because we have the money to run programs. We found that, like, tutoring programs themselves weren't as helpful as something like an O G specific program. Um-
Dude, I've been being a drunk for a decade.
Like, well, thank you, because it's been working. And now, but the beauty is that the teachers that have been trained are now implementing that as a tier one intervention in the classroom. So students are getting a lot more of that in the classroom. This just happens to be an additional piece. So thank you for, for advocacy for that, because we are definitely seeing a lot of great movement in our students. And, yeah, it's amazing.
I bet, I mean, you know, my kid who is dyslexic, you know, was identified, not as dyslexic, but is identified as having, you know, difficulty as far back as first grade. And there were all kinds of interventions, they just weren't the interventions that my child needed. And had those teachers been trained at that point, my child's trajectory would have been remarkably different, right? So it wasn't that the district wasn't intervening or trying to do something, it just wasn't the proper intervention, right? So that's the frustrating piece. Everybody's there, everybody's kind, everybody cares, but if you're not, you know, these kids need this very specific, you know? Um, I'm under mentioned, so I'm so glad to see that, that's there, and that is, it's also there at the school, so thank you.
Well, next committee is policies, and Mark, you just have one to open.
Yeah, this is an easy one. This is the policy on, uh, on harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Again, this was prompted by the state law requiring, uh, a specific form to be sent to the state independent of whatever the district does. So that's encoded in this policy, it's a change, a major change in this policy.
Sorry, Mark, I had to laugh when you said the words easy and hip policy to the same sentence. It may be the most convoluted, difficult policy ever to be created in the state of New Jersey.
Well, this, this-
Pages and pages of-
The change, I, I, the change is easy, the policy itself is-
The policy itself is horrifying. It took hours to read each time, but the change is pretty straightforward. Thank goodness.
Okay, we're gonna, if you haven't read that hip policy, you, you do have to vote on it. So everybody make sure you read it by next, uh, by our next meeting. Just try to slide a couple hours. It's not like reading. Uh, okay, we're gonna list well the comment. Uh, the Holland Department of Education, welcome to public participation, and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies, oh, one, six, four, and oh, one, six, seven, establishing, regulating, right, the public participate in public meetings. This is our three minutes, and these speakers have, um, three minutes to, um, share what they want to say. So if you, uh, have something to say, please, uh, raise your hand, your virtual hands, turn on your camera. Let us know you want to speak. And if we don't get anybody, then we're gonna be right on. And we are moving on to, are we to vote this one, right?
Yeah, voting.
So... Okay, so you have to rule whatever you have to do.
Yes, I'm going to, if you want to pay for, on finance, uh, I'm, 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 I'm going to rule items number nine and 10. These are the approval of proposals for the replacement rooftop HVAC unit, and then the approval of purchase of replacement rooftop HVAC unit, uh, at Irving Primary School. So I so moved, I need a second, please.
Second?
Thank you. And Leonard?
Ms. Faldeson? Yes. Ms. Maraschino?
Yes.
Mr. Creever?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, do you need a call?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Rosling?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Something else to vote on, but that's it? Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, okay. Um, presence report, anything that I wanted to say is, um, sort of following up on what our student representative, all the information that you shared, encouraging everybody to comfortably use one of the programs. Um, I actually went to the Alice Wonderland the other night, uh, the other afternoon, and, and it was a really wonderful program. Encourage you, uh, the, the public to come out and see these musical programs, all things happening over the holidays. And also, I went to the website today, and it was really exciting. It's really very colorful, very dark poppy. So if you're looking for something about the district, uh, that website is really fun to go to, so encourage you to do that. Um, that's it, any old business?
Uh, I have one brief item. Um, the safety committee, uh, district safety committee met last week. Um, we have in place now a safety plan, which is back in a loose slate. It's very comprehensive. Uh, it was reviewed by, uh, a fairly large group, there were about 15 people in the room, um, including teachers and administrators and myself, uh, representing the board and, and, and so on. And, uh, it's, uh, passes what the state requires us to have, but even more so. And, uh, some of you know, Jim Hollis, who's the, now the, uh, county emergency management, uh, person, executive, uh, and, uh, he was there and made some very good suggestions, but also praised the, uh, content and direction of that, uh, safety, uh, uh, plan. And, uh, it's, uh, online, it's a living document, it's in loose leaves, but also any change can be done in a Google Doc and, and used immediately. Um, and, um, it's a tremendous step in the right direction. Very, very happy that we're, you know, doing, doing this, especially given the state with a rock right now. So- So, so thank you for the administration.
Who else? New business? Moving right on here, um, I go for the public comment, in case anybody throws anything you want to say, so, um, once again, we welcome public participation, and we reserve this time for your comments, if anybody wants to speak, uh, we have your time. And, so, I need to adjourn. Do I have a second, I think? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay everyone, see you next week.
Okay, stay well, everybody.